Everybody, today is Wednesday, September 8th, and I would like to call this meeting of the Macomb Township Board of Trustees to order. The time is 6:30 PM. We will now say the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic through which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Leon.
Leon screwed up my rhythm. Try to stay in time with us, Leon. All right, Clerk Posey, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Trustee Cusmano.
Here.
Trustee Lucido.
Here.
Trustee Oliver.
Here.
Trustee Nevers.
Present.
Treasurer Gillette.
Present remotely from Macomb Township, Macomb County, Michigan.
Thank you. Clerk Posey here. Supervisor Viviano.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask that legal counsel be consulted in order to approve the absence of Treasurer Gillette and his ability to vote at this meeting.
Certainly.
Yes, so it's my understanding that Mr. Gillette is suffering from a medical condition which does not permit him to be in the presence of others, and that is one of the exceptions to the OMA for remote meetings.
And that OMA is still in effect, I believe, through the end of this year, correct?
Could be October.
October. But it is currently in effect.
Yes.
End of the year.
It could be the end of the year as well.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, moving on to approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Motion to approve the agenda is presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, we have a motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Trustee Cusmano, to approve the agenda as presented. Leon is slowing us up. That motion passes unanimously. Moving on to approval of the bills, do I have a motion?
So moved.
So, support.
Any discussion on the bill run? Hearing none, we have a motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve the bill run. That motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item four, which is approval of the previous meeting minutes from August 25th, 2021. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Support.
Any discussion? Hearing none, there's a motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Trustee Nevers, to approve the previous meeting's minutes. That motion passes unanimously. All right, moving on to public comment. This is for agenda items only. Anyone present wishing to speak, please make your way to the podium. Please remember you have a three-minute time limit. And anyone who is participating remotely, please raise your hand digitally and you will be called upon. Nobody present? Mr. Ivanowski, anybody remotely?
Most are not at this time.
Okay. No comment today, we are moving on. Moving on to the consent agenda, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move the consent agenda in its entirety.
Second.
Any discussion on the consent items?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple questions. Agenda item 6A, was, is this a form agreement, or was it drafted in-house by our legal counsel?
Mr. Chairman, it's, it's a form that we have been using for many years. This has been reviewed by the township attorney and approved for signature by the township attorney.
Yeah, I'd just like to indicate that I reviewed it, it's very well drafted. Also, are, there were, how many years, in other words, are these same agreements in place for subdivisions that went in back in 2000 in the late 1990s as well? Has it been that many years?
Back then, most of them were subdivisions, so these types of things were handled slightly differently. There was a special assessment district that was put over the entire subdivision that would pay for these repairs if the township had to step in. In this case, we have a site condominium, there's a homeowners association that would be tied to this, and legally, they have to have a homeowners association. So we do do them a bit differently now with site condominiums than we did with subdivisions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all the questions I have.
Thank you, Mr. Cusmano. Thank you, Mr. Van Tiflin. If there's no more discussion on the consent items, we have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey, to approve the consent items. That motion passes unanimously. Moving on to new business. We have a request from Parks and Rec to increase the part-time wage scale. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Who was the support?
Lucino.
Go ahead, Sal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good evening, Board. Parks and Recreation Department is requesting permission to increase the hourly rate for the part-time employees at our department. Since the pandemic, it's been increasingly tough to recruit and retain staff. Currently, our lifeguard personnel is about half of our normal staffing numbers. We feel a wage increase will help attract larger pool of employees to choose from, as well as help retain staff. I've included the current rates, as well as the proposed rates. This is a budgeted item, and I am available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. DeCarlo. Is there any questions or discussion from the board?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Mr. DeCarlo, how do these proposed rates compare to surrounding communities in Parks and Recreation? My concern is that...
Yes, sorry.
That's okay. Some of, just even the fast food restaurants are paying $2, $3 more than what's proposed, so I just want to make sure that you're putting yourself in a position to find future employment.
We think we are. We, we've met with HR, we polled all the other, you know, communities that have a facility like ours. We also did look at fast food restaurants and other places. We're hoping the climate will change pretty soon.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Trustee Lucido, to increase the part-time wage scales for Parks and Recs per the numbers proposed in the board packet. That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Mr. DeCarlo. Moving on to item nine, we have a request to approve payment for the construction pay estimate number three, 2021 sanitary sewer cleaning and CCT investigation to Pipe Tech Infrastructure Services for project number 0249-0215, with the amount of $71,679.24. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Go ahead, Mr. Wanglin.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and Board members. Water and Sewers in front of you tonight, requesting permission to approve Pay Cert number three, and the amount has already been stated. This will be payable to Pipe Tech Infrastructure Services. As everyone knows, this is part of the CIP plan, and they are cleaning and TVing sewers within the township this summer. We are recommending approval.
Thank you, Mr. Wanglin. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Lucido, to approve pay, the payment of construction pay estimate number three for the 221 sanitary sewer cleaning and CCT investigation to Pipe Tech Infrastructure, in the amount of $71,679.24. Members, please vote. That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Mr. Wanglin. Moving on to number 10, is a request to schedule a public hearing for street lighting SAD amendment resolution, amended resolution for the Rivers subdivision, number one and number two, for October 13th, 2021. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Van Tiflin?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Board members. As we've gone through and audited some of the special assessment districts that we have for street lighting, we have found a couple of them that have some clerical errors. This is one of them, and in order for us, we've worked with the township attorney, in order for us to amend the resolution so we don't have any issues going forward with these special assessments, we would like to amend the resolution at a public hearing for October 13th. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Van Tiflin. Any questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. I guess it would be between legal and engineering. Is there any exposure, monetary exposure that the township is facing because of these defects? I'll put it up for either one of you.
I'm going to be honest with you, I don't know what the defects are, if they're substantial, or if they're just minor defects. If they're minor defects, then I really don't have a major concern. If they're substantial, then we would have to look at it from a different viewpoint.
Do you know the answer to what defect or, in the legal descriptions?
Yeah, legal, I don't know the specific, you know, issue with the legal description, but I, I don't think that this is going to be an issue because it doesn't affect the cost of, it doesn't affect what we're going to charge the resident. We're charging them correctly, it's just the resolution had some errors in it.
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask that legal counsel look into it, and then when we vote at the hearing for the special assessment district that we have an answer, because if I'm not incorrect, this is another deficiency that's appeared in a special assessment district that's required a resolution to amend, and so it's, I have some concerns. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cusmano. How did we discover the defect, Jim?
So, we're in the process of auditing all of the special assessments so that we can make sure that we're charging the residents the right amount through, through DTE, and a couple of them have, we've discovered some issues.
Okay.
You know, address is wrong, legal description's incorrect, you know, those types of things, and these are, you know, some of them date back, you know, quite a ways. So we've worked with legal counsel, Mr. Aloia's office, to draft the correct resolution so that we can correct these things, you know, going forward. That's what the board will see at the next meeting, is the resolution that, that he prepared.
Okay. Can you please send the nature of the defect to both Mr. Aloia and Mr. Thompson again, and ask for a legal opinion on whether there's any township exposure?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any more questions or discussion? All right, we have a motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Trustee Lucido, to schedule the public hearing for a street lighting SAD amended resolution for Rivers subdivision one and two for October 13th, 2021. That motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 11, is a request to auth, request for authori, request, excuse me, request for authorization to proceed with an engineering standards and ordinances update, not to exceed $17,500. Is there a motion?
So moved, so moved, Mr. Chair.
Supported.
Mr. Van Tiflin?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Board members. Engineering is requesting authorization to begin a, an update of the engineering standards, as well as chapter 14 and 15 of the Township Code. That's the land development ordinance and the water and sewer ordinance. Basically, these are the documents that govern how land is developed here in, in the township. I've been involved with the township for 22 years, we've never done a comprehensive look at those, those standards. Obviously, a lot of things change over time. We've tweaked some things, we've put some things in place that protect the township, but we haven't had the time to go back and actually put a lot of these things into the ordinance or into the engineering standards. So what we're doing tonight is asking permission to go ahead and do that review, come back with some language that modernizes and maybe streamline some things so that it, the engineering plan review process goes better. And, and also to protect the township from, from any liability if we get challenged on some of these things that we're enforcing but are not in, in the actual ordinance. So we've requested a proposal from Anderson, Exton, and Westrick to help us out with this. AEW is the firm that does just about all of our engineering plan review. This proposal is for $17,500, that is a not-to-exceed number, so essentially, what will happen is they'll bill us for the time that they have into it, not to exceed the $17,500. If it costs less, they spend fewer hours than they anticipated, then we would, you know, see that savings. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Van Tiflin. This is, you know, I, I don't think it's any secret, I've been prompting yourself and all the other department heads to bring, to help us bring all of our code of ordinances up to the most modern standards available, but you've been looking at trying to accomplish this for longer than I've been here, right?
Yes, we, we, I have notes going back probably 10 or 15 years of things that we want to change, and I think Water and Sewer has the same thing. We have made some, you know, some tweaks over the years, but it's looking at everything that's in the ord, the standards, looking at the other ordinances, making sure that things match from one to the other, so that there's no conflicting information, conflicting requirements. So, yeah, this, it is overdue.
Well, what would have to hap, have to happen if we were to attempt to do this internally?
Then some other work would have to be transferred to AEW, because right now, our, our staff just, Crystal and I in my department, we just don't have the time to do this. We've been trying to do it for years and have not been able to get this done. So, you know, with some of the effort that, you know, Planning Department is making with the zoning ordinance, the land division ordinance, you know, we think it's time, you know, to do, try and get everything done, in order to get that done in the, in a timely manner. We're trying to get it done by the end of the year. We really need the help of, of AEW.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to add as well, you know, we've run into some difficulties and challenges on the ZBA because of our ordinances being out of date and having conflicting information in them, so I think this is going to benefit all of our boards going forward.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple questions.
Sure.
Will we be receiving a current copy with redline redactions as to the changes?
Yes, that's, well, essentially, yes. I mean, what, what my idea is, was we'll remove, we'll replace the ordinance in its entirety. But, yeah, to help the board understand what things we've changed, and they'll, I think there'll be a lot of things that will change, we can certainly provide that.
And I get, this question's from Mr. Van Tiflin through the chair. I was, had an opportunity to review the ordinance briefly. Chapter 14, section 121 states that the township engineer will publish and periodically update by formal amendment the above noted standards. Hereafter, said standards will be referred to as the engineering and construction standards, close quote. The township's engineering and construction standards shall be enforced as part of this ordinance. I guess the question is, don't you have the ability to do the engineering standards vis a vis this section I just described?
Yes, and typically, the way it's been done in the past is I will draft some language, but I do have the board review and approve it, just like I would in ordinance. Just so it, it's out there for the public, it's transparent. You're right, in that section of the ordinance, I could probably just publish it without coming to the board, but, you know, just for transparency, we've always brought it to the board.
And what is the hourly rate?
They have a, an hourly rate schedule that was approved by the board in 2018, and it varies depending on what personnel they have working on it. I think it varies from, for the engineers that would be working on this, probably from $105 to $134 an hour.
I have, Mr., I'm sorry to interrupt. I have a copy of the rate schedule, if you'd like to see it.
Oh, I'd appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. So are we talking about that they're anticipating 100 hours of work? I mean...
Based, based on the number they gave us, and, you know, my estimation of, of the people that would be working on it, it's probably more like 150 hours.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. So just for the sake, for anyone who's, for any of the public that's paying attention or listening to this particular motion, the rate schedule from AEW was passed in 18, as Mr. Van Tiflin said, it's held, it's the same rates. It was originally approved for the 19, 2019, 2020, and they've held it through 2021, so the rates have remained unchanged for the last three years.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm passing this back to your chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more discussion or questions about this item? All right, hearing none, we have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Nevers, to authorize Mr. Van Tiflin to proceed with the engineering standards and ordinances update, not to exceed $17,500. That motion passes unanimously. Moving on to the next item, is a request to approve the payment for construction pay estimate number one for the 2021 pathway gap closure program to JSS Macomb LLC, in the amount of $115,401.60. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Van Tiflin?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Board members. JSS Macomb is currently working on the 2021 pathway gap closure program, and they're making good progress and should be completed with a substantial portion of the construction this month. They are requesting payment in the amount of $115,401.60 for the work that they've completed to this point, and we've reviewed their request and are in agreement with the quantities and are recommending approval.
Thank you, Mr. Van Tiflin. Do we know what percentage of work that is, of the total contract?
I don't know, I, I think it's not quite half. I think that the total contract amount is 255, if I remember correctly.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Trustee Nevers, to approve the pay estimate number one to JSS Macomb, in the amount of $115,401.60. That motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 13, we have a request for authorization to promote employee number 133, which is Kim Patterson.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board members. Tonight, I ask for your approval to promote Kim Patterson to Township Assessor. Ms. Patterson has been employed to the Assessing Department for over 18 years, and is a very dedicated employee. She has successfully achieved all required certification by, through the State Tax Commission, for this position. She also has been in training with me for over, for the last year and a half, and I am confident that she will make an excellent choice for Township Assessor. Level four assessors are hard to come by in the state of Michigan, and I think Macomb Township will be fortunate to have her.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey. Anything to add, Mr. Tabaka?
Yeah, if approved, Kim's start date will be September 11th of this year, of course.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey, to promote Kim Patterson to the position of Township Assessor. That motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Kim.
Thank you, Board member.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey. Thank you, Mr. Tabaka. Item 14 is an authorization to initiate the recruitment process in the Assessing Department. Mr., is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Tabaka?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board members. The Assessing Department has requested that the HR department start their recruiting process for the position of Appraiser Aid. This position will replace Kim, that is currently the Senior Appraiser, as being promoted to the Assessor position. The Appraiser Aid position is a entry-level position. This position is covered under the CBA with MAPE, and would be posted in accordance with the provisions of the CBA. And this is a budgeted position.
Thank you, Mr. Tabaka. Any questions or discussion? No, hearing none, we have a motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Trustee Lucido, to initiate the recruitment process in the Assessing Department. That motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 15, we have a resolution to declare September 10th, 2021, Dan Hickey Day in Macomb Township.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to declare September 10th, 2021, Dan Hickey Day in Macomb Township.
I'll support that.
Well, this came under my section, so we just heard from Mr. Hickey, he, his official...
Chair?
Yes? Do you have something to say to Mr. Treasurer Gillette?
Mr. Chair, I, if, sorry, before, I, I'm a little bit disappointed and concerned by the lack of backup material in our packet with regard to this particular resolution. I would ask for deference of the Chair that we provide an opportunity for interested individuals who may not have been given adequate background information to, to make some statements on the record with regard to this resolution.
No, I, I think that's fair. I, since I've only been in office 10 months, my work with Dan has been a little bit limited, so I guess at this time, if maybe some of our department heads who are here would have a moment to weigh in on Mr. Hickey's career with Macomb Township, we would appreciate it.
Good evening again, Board. I'm Sal DeCaro, the Parks and Recreation Director. I'd like to address this proposal for Dan Hickey Day. I'm sorry, does this guy even still work here? I mean, he's never in his office. So if you're going by his attendance, I guess you could probably call everyday Dan Hickey Day. I'm totally against this proposal.
Thank you, Mr. DeCaro. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I'm Jim Van Tiflin, I'm the Township Engineer. For this proposal, are we really talking about Dan Hickey, the Township Assessor? Does anyone actually think that it's a good idea for, to honor a person who decides when what we pay for property taxes every year? As a taxpayer in this community, I know I don't. I'm against this proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Van Tiflin.
Yeah, tough crowd.
You know, Mr. Chairman, I really thought he was going to give us four more years. And now he's bailing on us? Wow.
It is disappointing. It is disappointing.
Well, being that he's leaving, I got a couple questions to ask Mr. Hickey while he's here. So, all them deerheads in your office, is that going to go with you?
Deerheads in the...
Ah, no, no, don't try to hide that stuff. I see them. And I want to know about that deer blind that's there, too. What are you going to do with that? Is that still there?
Got someplace to hide my office, all right.
You could sit there and try to tell the board that's not there, but I see it, I really do. I just want to know from you, is it going, or is...
It's going.
All right, okay. And then, I'm curious, maybe Kim's going to start some kind of, you know, operation like Dan was with all kind of things in that office. You got to give me a word, Kim.
I don't think, there won't be any deerheads.
Well, we've already promoted Kim, and, and I'll give you my word that I'm going to groom Kim to be a little bit more professional than what we have seen in the past.
Yeah. When I walked in there and seen that kayak, I'm like, come on, Dan, are you serious? A kayak? You know, so, all right, I guess if that's if he wants to leave, I guess he's good leave, you know? I don't want him to leave, but...
I think, I think Kim...
I think you do.
Well, I'm just, I just want to know about all that stuff in that office, that's all.
It's going, I've been trying to get him to pack all week.
Yeah, I can understand that, and...
Trustee Oliver, I think, I think his protege might have some insight as to, on this resolution.
Okay.
Go ahead, Kim.
Hi, I'm Kim Patterson, the new Assessor, and I have to agree with the first two speakers, and I'm against this proposal. Dan Hickey's retirement really won't make much impact on the Assessing Department. To be honest, we've all been caring him for the last 10 years anyways. So as far as the Assessing Department goes, it'll just be business as usual.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson. Mr. Tabaka, perhaps you can speak on his behalf?
Thank you. As a HR director, technically, Dan cannot retire because he's never filled out the proper retirement paperwork.
I have two days.
So you have the midnight tonight.
So, you, you have the midnight tonight, so stick around. But in this case, I'm gonna let it slide. With that being said, with Dan, AKA Beefcake, out of the way, my question is, who is gonna step up and be the next Beefcake of McComb Township?
Thank you, Mr. Tabaka.
And for the record, I'm against the proposal.
Well, Treasurer Gillette, I don't know, did that answer any of your concerns? I'm not sure that it did.
Well, I, I think it addressed my concerns. Whether it answered them, I'm not sure. I would like to note for the record that I have gotten multiple emails in my office from the McComb County Chapter of PETA, People for the Ethical Treatment of Animals, opposed to this resolution. But I'd just like to state that for the record, and, uh, I appreciate your lenience in allowing people to weigh in on this particularly important agenda item.
Oh, that's awes- that's troubling to hear. Well, um, I guess I'd like a chance to weigh in. Obviously, we all wanted to have a little fun with Dan on his last week in his resolution. But truth be told, uh, Dan has been, uh, an exemplary public servant doing the job of an Assessor that is, as Mr. Van Tiflin so eloquently put, often, um, reviled in the community that they serve. However, it is a critically important function. It is part of the engine that allows us to go. So, Dan, for all of your hard work, uh, and all of your years of service, both in McComb Township and beyond McComb Township, we appreciate you very much. Now, you, you came up here. I think you had a couple of words you wanted to say, so I'll give you a shot at it.
I just, I wish I, you know, could've worked a little bit longer with some of the new board members, but, uh, between the city of Roseville and McComb Township, I think forty-six years is long enough. I'm ready, ready to go. Uh, but, uh, like, as Kim said, I think a lot of the credit has to go to my staff, uh, which is Carol Nicholson, Kim Patterson, Peter Custone, Arlene Bagley, Cindy Blank, and Phil Charbo. They're the ones that do all the work. I more or less just supervise and get all the credit, but they've made my life so, uh, easy. It's, and I appreciate...
We noticed.
So, again, thank you very much, and I'll be, I'll miss all my, uh, other employees here. So, uh, it hasn't sunk in yet, but I'm sure after next week, uh, it'll sink in.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey.
Thank you very much.
Board members, does anyone else like to weigh in?
Dan, Dan's Charlie. When, when was our first meeting, uh, we worked? Was it the Board of Review?
Yeah, that was back in the, uh, seventy, or, uh, eighties, early eighties.
Yep. That's the first time we worked together.
Yes, yep.
That's dating us.
Long time ago.
Long time ago, yeah.
Things sure have changed. I mean, twenty-one mile, uh, twenty-one mile road, it's still a dirt road, and I don't know how many, pray it, maybe three thousand, uh, homes in it.
No more than four thousand, yeah.
Yeah, I know, it's just, it was pretty small communities. But I think this board is, is gonna be great for the future of this township.
Thank you.
We'll miss you, Dan.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one of the things that crossed my mind is if, if this is ever, a transcript is ever generated of this, that the tone was of humor and sarcasm and that the, that the speakers made the remarks. I find that my dealings with Mr. Hickey were always professional. He always answered all my questions, and of course, I'm in support of the motion recognizing Dan Hickey Day. Thank you for your years of service, sir.
Thank you, Trustee Cusmano.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to let Dan know how much I will personally miss him. He's, uh, he comes from Roseville, so I've known him for a very long time. And, um, through the toughest years here, the first four years, Dan was like a father. He'd come stomping into my office the day after a bad board meeting and sit down and just make sure that he encouraged me to stay strong and shoot of how I felt. So, I will definitely miss your presence, and I wish you the best.
Mr. Chairman?
Certainly.
Yes, uh, I have not known, uh, Mr. Hickey as long as some, uh, but I can tell you that much before I ever considered running for, uh, local township office, I had done some, uh, how-to-appeal-your-property-tax seminars in McComb Township, uh, as a private citizen. And I met with Mr. Hickey, who was exceedingly gracious with his time, his knowledge, the information he provided, the willingness he was to help make sure that citizens got clear information about their rights. Uh, he was, um, impressed me as somebody who wasn't, uh, he wasn't, uh, he wasn't adverse to taking his time and meeting with anybody in the township, to work with them, explain things to them in very clear manner. It was obvious that he was exceptionally knowledgeable and also just incredibly generous man. So, uh, I appreciated the time both now as the Treasurer and in the time prior to that, short time prior to that, uh, w- working with Mr. Hickey, and, uh, we certainly are gonna miss him as a, as a, as township government.
Thank you, Treasurer Gillette.
Thank you.
All right, well, if there's nothing else, we have a resolution. Uh, we have a motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Trustee Nevers, to declare September tenth, two thousand twenty-one, Dan Hickey Day in McComb Township. Clerk Posey, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
And Supervisor Viviano?
Yes. That resolution carries.
You have to come up, Dan.
You have to shake our hands like you're an Eagle Scout.
Thank you.
Congratulations, welcome.
All the best. Enjoy your retirement. Long life.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to public comment. Anyone who wishes to speak may approach the microphone. Uh, anyone who wishes to speak who's participating remotely, please raise your hand digitally. Please remember, you have a three-minute time limit, and please state your name for the record.
This is a very tough act to follow, I have to say. My name's Dave Piper. I live at one-five-eight-eight-nine Van Meter. And first of all, I'd like to congratulate Chief Phillips for the ribbon-cutting ceremony today. It was great. Uh, unfortunately, I had a previous engagement, so I had to leave early and couldn't stay for the tour. I hope to rectify that sometime in the future. Uh, but my reason for being here tonight is I'm a member of the Friends of McComb Township. Uh, we're an organization of one hundred percent volunteers, working for the better men, uh, community. Uh, we're best known for our annual scholarship program and for our donations to the Glenn Peters School for Handicap Kids. And I'm here to remind people, we do bottling hand drives on the third Sunday of each month, to raise money for those, uh, causes. Um, we recently, just last month, we were able to donate four thousand dollars to the Glenn Peters School because of those drives. Uh, our upcoming drive is ne- next week, Sunday, September nineteenth, from eleven to two, in the parking lot of the school. And I encourage residents to continue to support us so we can continue to do that. Um, anyone who can't make it for that, 'cause I know there's the conflict with the, uh, library opening at two o'clock, but, uh, we do have volunteers that will actually pick it up from your porch, and you can, um, either call or text to five-eight-six-six-one-zero-three-five-one-one to make arrangements. We'd be happy to do that. Uh, we are gonna continue doing this. We've, we scheduled at least through November, depending on whether we may continue to do it after that. But right now, third Sunday of September, October, November, we will definitely be out there to take your donations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Piper. Mr. Ivanowski, is anyone digitally? No? Welcome back.
Um, I just wanted to take a moment to thank the Board for allowing me to advance my career and serve as the Township Assessor. I'm excited to start this new chapter, and I look forward to working with all of you. I also know I have some pretty big shoes to fill, and I would like to thank Dan for everything he has taught me and for being an awesome boss and mentor. Um, we will truly miss him. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, if there's no more public comment, we will move on to board comments.
Supervisor Viviano, um, I would like to, um, make a comment about Dan. Uh, I've known him to be the quintessential professional. Um, he's so easygoing, and it's been a pleasure knowing you. And Kim, although there are, um, big shoes to fill, you've got the temperament and the demeanor. I think you'll do great, and I congratulate the both of you. Long retirement, and on a more serious note, I would just like to take this time to ask for one minute of silence to remember Marie Malberg, who was our Township Treasurer for twenty-two years. She passed away early this morning at the age of ninety-one.
Thank you, Trustee Nevers. Trustee Lucido?
I would just like to say, uh, to Mr. Hickey, um, in my short time on the Board, I didn't have much, uh, uh, interaction with you, um, but I've heard nothing but good things, and I wish you the best, and thank you for your years of service. And, uh, to Kim, congratulations on your new position, and, uh, thank you for your service. That's it.
Thank you, Trustee Lucido. Trustee Oliver?
Yes, uh, I get an announcement on the, the planning. On September twenty-third, from four PM, from four PM to eight PM, the Planning Commission is hosting an open house about the master plan. We are looking to receive input from the community, and we will have interaction stations that focus on parking racks, trails, town center development, utilities and infrastructure development. Housing options also will be there, and zoning and land use will have a booth for that, too. You'll also be able to view firsthand, uh, our rough draft of the master plan. The open house will be held at the Recreation Center, and I encourage all the residents, uh, to, that, that, um, wanna know a lot of things about planning, a lot of things about our master plan to come. Uh, we, we get a lot of residents that come to our meetings, and they ask a lot of great questions. And I hope a lot of them, same residents, will be there at, at this. So, I think it'll be a nice event. It's gonna be set up good, and I wanna also thank the Planning and, uh, Department and all the work they put into this, 'cause it's, it's not an easy task to, uh, uh, redo your master plan, so, and that's it.
Thank you, Trustee Oliver. Trustee Cusmano?
Mr. Chairman, no comments tonight. Thank you.
Treasurer Gillette?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just like to echo my, uh, appreciation, uh, to Dan Hickey for a job well done for our community for so many years. And also our, my appreciation for him helping us, uh, ensure continuation of excellence within the, uh, Assessing Department, and congratulate Kim on her, uh, her ascension to, to Assessor. Uh, wish Dan well in retirement, and I'd like to also echo the comments regarding, um, Ms. Malberg and, uh, you know, send my condolences and well wishes and, and thoughts, uh, to the family of the Malbergs. Um, and, you know, express my appreciation to what their family's contributed to McComb Township throughout its history. Thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer Gillette. Clerk Posey?
Uh, I would just like to, again, wish Dan best wishes on his retirement, and congratulations to Kim. Uh, you're filling some big shoes, but I think you'll do a great job. Um, also wanted to say, good job, thank you, and great job to Josh in planning. Um, I believe this is the first time we've done a big resident engagement initiative like that for our master plan and encouraging them to put their input in, so I appreciate you initiating that and coordinating that. And also, um, to the Fire Chief, great job today at the, um, ribbon-cutting for the Public Safety Building. It was an amazing ceremony, and I'm thankful that the, uh, men and women that serve this community have a top-notch, uh, building to work out of. That's all I have.
Thank you, Clerk Posey. Um, I'd also like to echo, uh, congratulations to Chief Phillips on our ribbon-cutting today. Uh, I think it went great. The building looks fantastic. Um, a few minor things to button up, and that building will be a hundred percent ready to go for the community. It's a, it's a great, it's a great facility, and if anyone gets the opportunity to go by and take a look, I would encourage you to do so. We also have tomorrow, um, our firefighter, Joe Warren, is gonna begin his one-hundred-and-forty-mile walk across the state to raise money for firefighters with cancer. Uh, it begins at, uh, the ceremonies begin at seven forty-five tomorrow morning out of, um, is it Station One? Two, Station Two, over on Twenty-One Mile Road. If you haven't, uh, if you don't have the opportunity to come wish firefighter Warren farewell on his journey, please, uh, check him out on social media or on their website, uh, Neighbors United, and contribute, uh, in any way you can. I echo, uh, the township's, uh, sorrow at the loss of former Treasurer Marie Malberg, who is also the mother of former Treasurer Karen Goodhue. Services for former Treasurer Malberg are tomorrow, Thursday, from one to eight PM at Malberg Funeral Home on Thirty-Two Mile Road in Romeo, and also Friday, um, she will be in-state at eleven AM with an, uh, eleven-thirty mass at St. Peter's Church in Mount Clemens. Uh, Dan, congratulations again, and thank you for all of your service. Kim, looking forward to working with you over the next many years. I'm sure you're gonna be better than Dan. And, and lastly, uh, for those of you who might be unaware, um, my deputy, Terri Cole, has officially retired as of last week after a career in public service herself, serving many communities, not only our own, Shelby, uh, Auburn Hills. Uh, I think she did some work in St. Clair Shores, and she's been one of the most well-respected clerks in our area for many years. Um, has finally taken her due and is retiring. Um, hopefully, this retirement sticks for her. I wish her well. I appreciate all of the time and energy she spent. She stayed on, um, just for me because, um, she knew that as someone new to municipal government, I was gonna need some support, and she offered her services, and I was glad to take them, so. Congratulations to Terri, and again, thank you for all of your service to, to me and to McComb Township. And with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Motion by Treasurer, or, Trustee Nevers, supported by Clerk Posey, to adjourn the meeting. Members, please vote.
What is the time, Mr. Supervisor?
Still waiting for the results. Treasurer Gillette? Are you stalling, Treasurer Gillette?
Yes, I was just asking what the time was, that the meeting is adjourned at.
It's not adjourned yet. I think you're not hitting your, your save button on purpose. That motion passes. This meeting is adjourned. The time is seven eighteen.